Welcome to the public meeting of November 18th, 2025 of the Township of Washington zoning Board. Adequate notices of the meeting was given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act by the Board Secretary to at least two newspapers on December 27, 2024, and this meeting has been posted on the Township Board's in Board, Electronic Message Board, WCTV, and on the Township website. Please stand and salute to the flag.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To participate in the general public portion of the meeting, please click the link on the website enlisted on the agenda to join the webinar. You will be asked to state your name for the record, and we ask that only one person. Oh, sorry. Let me do roll. I skipped. Sorry. Let me do roll call.
Mr. D'Agostino?
Here.
Mrs. Grimaldi is absent. Ms. Hannah?
Here.
Mr. LaGrata?
Here.
Mr. Zicko?
Here.
Mr. Rivera?
Here.
Mrs. Osment?
Here.
Chairman Getz is absent. Let the record reflect also in attendance our attorney, Gary G. Antonio, Ward Engineer Jeff Morris for John Yimick, and Board Secretary Grace Gish.
Sorry. To participate in the general public portion of the meeting, please click the link on the website enlisted on the agenda to join the webinar. You will be asked to state your name for the record, and we ask that only one person speak at a time. This public comment portion is only for non-agenda items. Time is set aside later in the meeting to address questions or comments about current agenda items. If you are participating by phone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. At the end of the general public portion, no further general questions or comments will be accepted. We have a motion to open the public portion.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody in the audience would like to come up and talk about anything that's not on the agenda? Anybody on Zoom?
No hands raised.
Motion to close public portion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approval of the minutes of October 21st. Has anybody had an opportunity to look and make any comments or suggestions?
No comments on my end.
No comments?
No comments.
Motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. D'Agostino?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
Mr. LaGrata?
Yes.
Mr. Zicko?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Osment?
Yes.
New business. Application of Jessica Leweski Rexworth for an addition and alteration to 637 Valley Court, Block 3201, Lot 14.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Matthew Capizzi on behalf of the applicant. If I can just give a brief summary of the application and we can call our first witness. This is a property that's in the borough's RA zone. It's a 10,000 square foot lot with 98 feet of frontage. It's improved with a single-family dwelling that's a ranch style dwelling. The applicant's purchased the property in 2023, and what I believe is significant to the application before the board this evening is at that time there was a large pool and patio in the rear yard as well as a poolhouse. And I have the survey that existed at that time that was in disrepair. So those elements were removed, and that took away approximately 1,800 square feet of impervious coverage. So the table that's before you does not take into consideration that previously existing 1,800 square feet of coverage because at the time Mr. Gorstein prepared his plan, those improvements did not exist at the property. I raise them just merely for relevancy. I think it's a good comparison. This evening, we're asking to place approximately 400 square foot addition along the rear of this home. It'll be a one-story addition to keep the ranch-style vernacular of the dwelling going forward, with this is a small addition to try to improve the utility of the existing space. Those of you that may have had the opportunity to visit the property, this neighborhood is a fully developed, single-family neighborhood of all ranch-style homes. So keeping the ranch-style home by way of the addition off the rear, we thought was appropriate. Again, staying with the existing architectural style found within the neighborhood. Also of note, to the rear of us is a townhouse development, and we are facing actually the closest landscaping between our property and that property to our rear. We are not requesting a rear yard separation. As I said, it's only a one-story addition, so it's shallow in height. But just in case the board was concerned about the impact of this additional building coverage on that development to the rear, there are no concerns because again, that is a much more dense multifamily development as compared to the subject property. Mr. Gorstein prepared the plan set that's before the board this evening. Two variants is being sought, building coverage and impervious coverage. Again, because of the ranch-style dwelling, we need to go outward as far as the building footprint is concerned, and that's what's driving the need for the additional building coverage. And as the building coverage goes up, as does the impervious coverage. But if we look back in time ever so slightly to 2023, we had 1,800 square feet of additional coverage there. So if we had kept that, we would really not be increasing the impervious coverage at all. And more importantly, the property was accustomed to having an additional 1,800 square feet of coverage on it for many, many years. So the additional 400 square feet of coverage here is still 1,400 square foot less than what the neighborhood had been customarily used to. So again, we don't believe there would be any substantial impact as a result of granting either variance, but certainly we'll have Mr. Gorstein go through those details. If there are no questions of me, I can have Mr. Gorstein sworn and have him go through the plan set.
Please raise your right hand.
It's working. Yep, I think you got it.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
Can you please repeat and spell your name for the board, for the record?
It's Michael Gorstein, G-O-R-E-N-S-T-E-L-A-N.
Thank you. Michael, can you do me a favor, just if you can keep your voice up a little bit for me, please? And if you can go through your educational and professional experiences?
Sure. I have a Bachelor of Science in Architecture, a Bachelor of Architecture licensed in New York and New Jersey, licensed in New Jersey since 1985. I've appeared before various boards, including Bedepli, Howard, Englewood, Alpine, Earl One.
Your license is in good standing?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
I ask this board, accept this witness as a professional witness, expert witness in architecture, correct?
Correct. Thank you. Mr. Gorstein, before you go through your narrative, the plan set that's on the easel, is that the same plan set we filed with the application?
Yes.
Thank you. You can talk to us a little about the existing condition and how we're proposing to improve it?
Yeah, so further drawing A1, you can see the footprint of the existing dwelling. It's a, as was mentioned, it's a ranch, a one-story structure. The rear, we're proposing, it's shaded in that red hatch, and it's a 12-foot deep rear extension. Lot itself contains rear patio, shed, paved pavers, creating a path with the rear down towards the front. There's a paved paper driveway in the front, and again, towards the entry at this point of the house. The interior on A2, the items noted in red are new construction. The items dotted in green are the proposed construction to be removed.
Excuse me, but can you just raise up the voice a little bit because it's hard coming on the tape?
Okay, is that better?
Is that better?
That's better. I'll get closer.
Thank you.
Sure. So the, as they said, the area in red is new construction proposed. The area in green is proposed construction to be removed, and the uncolored area is existing construction to remain. So the existing interior of the house, you enter from this portion into a living room, an open dining area, and an existing family room. There's a one-car garage to the side with an entrance into the family room. This section contained a small kitchen. What we are proposing with this 12-foot rear addition is that we expand it to the rear, allowing for an increase in very tight counter space. And my understanding is both our clients cook, and they need to have some room in the kitchen to maneuver, which this gives them, also provides for some eat-in area. We're also providing a walk-in pantry and a new laundry room, and we're maintaining a sort of rear exit to the rear yard, which they had in the scheme. This is the stair leading down to the basement. There are two existing bedrooms, and in this area is the existing primary bedroom up to this point. It's limited in size. It has a small toilet room because it's a toilet, and a sink, no bathing facility there, and has a small walk-in closet. So in the new scheme, we're giving them additional closet space. We're increasing the size of the primary bedroom, and we're providing for a shower, double vanity, and a toilet. Right now, all three bedrooms share this tub as the only unit of bathing in the house. The roof plan indicates the new construction area. In effect, the entire roof will be re-roofed with new asphalt shingle. A3 has a rear view and a side view of the house. What's shown in red again is new construction. This is the rear of the existing family room, and this additional wing here includes the new primary bedroom area, the laundry room window, and this is the kitchen area with the proposed porch outleading to the backyard. Side view, you can see clearly the 12-foot addition to the rear, and the height of the new addition is no higher than existing structure. In terms of zoning, we are in an A-zone. The required lot area is 10,000 square feet. We are at 10,000 square feet, so we are conforming. Minimum lot frontage is 100 feet. We are 100 feet, and we're conforming there. Minimum lot width is 100. We're slightly under it at 98.02, so we're existing non-conforming. Minimum lot depth 95 feet. We are at 101, conforming there. Minimum front yard is 30 feet. We are at 30 feet. We're not touching anything. We're maintaining that. As I mentioned, all our work is in the rear, and the perception of that from the street is really minimal. The rear yard, I mentioned, is 30. We're at 26.3. This is the 26.3 area of the existing. We are at slightly beyond the 30. And the side yard, 15 feet, we are at 15.7. And on this side, we are about 23, aligning with the existing side of the house. Maximum building coverage is 2,000 square feet. The existing is 2,029. We are proposing 2,465. We're 465 square feet over the maximum. It's a non-conforming condition. Maximum impervious coverage, 3,500 square feet. I want to correct that number. It says 3,307. It should be 3,410, actually. We're proposing 3846, so we're 346 square feet over the max there, and that's not conforming. In terms of height, as I mentioned, we're less than the, slightly under the existing 200, 2 and 1/2 stories, 30 feet is required, and we are under that, and we're conforming in the height.
Michael, the 2023 survey that I mentioned in my opening statement, did you have a chance to review that?
I didn't see it.
As far as the pool and patio and the poolhouse that existed at that time, how many square feet approximately did that account for?
Roughly, I would say about 1,800 square feet.
And that 1,800 square feet that has been removed, that's not picked up anywhere in your existing?
No, that includes the poolhouse, the in-ground pool, and the surrounding concrete, just concrete slide like that surround.
Your existing conditions impervious coverage calculation does not include any of those areas, correct? Thank you. As far as the rear addition is concerned, the only aspect that may be visible from the street is just the modified roof line. Is that correct?
Not really. It would be below that. What you might catch, a bit of the side, that's a minimal, minimal view from the side view. Nothing from the front, directly from the front.
So not, really not perceptible at all from the street?
Barely.
And the addition, the rear yard setback is conforming to that addition?
Oh, yeah. We're beyond 30 feet.
As far as the development that exists to the south, is that a townhouse development?
I'm honestly not familiar with what's going on there. You don't work for me with that.
Fair enough. As far as the facade element of the addition, how is that being tied in?
It's not, what you mean by the side moment?
The facade?
The facade. We are maintaining the existing structure is, has aluminum shingles, aluminum siding, and we're maintaining the same finish along the side in the rear.
Thank you, Michael. I don't have any, I don't have any further questions for him.
Anybody have any questions for the architect?
Is there a civil engineer or grading? No?
No.
So then the only question I would have is if the board looked favorably on this, if stormwater would be collected with an underground tank or something of that, that sort of?
Yes, we have, we have requested stormwater management calculations and that to be taken here.
Okay.
Yeah, whatever's required in that, on that end.
Yeah, our side engineer would do a complete side plan.
Can I ask a question? There was a letter that was sent from the engineer, who I know is down at the league, and it says, and that's what I want to understand, this office has reviewed recent aerial imagery of the site and found that the rear yard includes a pool and a patio.
That's an old image. It's an old image. I've seen it myself. If you look on Google Earth or something like that, it still shows it, but you check the date on the image. It's not there.
Okay. I mean, you know, it just, it seems strange that it says, because I know when that pool actually went in, that was a variance that the pool was.
Yeah.
The pool went in in 1986.
It's not there.
Okay.
It's all grass.
It's all grass?
Yeah.
Then why do we have a fence going down in between? Was that the whole size of the pool? This looks like there's a, some kind of a fence that goes right down the area where the...
There's a fence here.
Not, yeah, right where the pool was. Yeah?
No, that's just a...
No, no, no. Here, this area. This looks like there's a fence. I didn't understand that.
There may still be a fence there.
Well, I don't know what those little barks are.
Oh, you're talking about this?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, there's still, right there's still existing fence there. Off of the patio and the shed area. Yeah, back to the other side, yeah.
That's a fence?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's just cement or it was grass?
The area under it is, is grass, I believe. Yeah.
Okay.
So, Mr. Morris?
Yes.
I have a question based on what John had written on the report. So on page two, number two, it says the survey map of the property has not been provided to this office. Has that been?
That's been done.
That's been done.
Yeah, we have now a current survey. It would have been nice if we had the 2023 survey also, so we could compare the two as far as the pool and the cabana, but we don't have that. We have, we have a current 2025 survey.
And the scale shall be verified?
Yes.
He wrote afterwards?
I mean, I was...
Gary, on the floor, is A1, please?
What do we have?
This is the survey from 23.
And how, so what did Mr. Morris scale that?
Yeah, this is not scaled, but it's, and actually, the one Mr. Capizzi had just given us shows the in-ground pool and the poolhouse.
So this is a survey dated June 20th, 2023, which we're marking as A1, and the most recent survey that we were referring to is August 12th, 2025, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So if we do the comparison, the two, two surveys, one shows the in-ground pool and the other one does not?
That's correct.
Okay, the in-ground pool, surrounding patio, and the poolhouse have all been eliminated?
Taken away. Okay.
Also, if it's approved, the, I guess it's a, I'm not sure exactly, a family room. The family room is in violation of the rear yard setback, and that's in addition to that house. It's not originally with that house. I blanked that in the resolution stating that there is a, you know, there were violation of the rear yard setback. they're in violation of the rear yard setback, which has nothing to do with this application, but I wanted it as part of it for future reference.
Certainly a ratification of that non-conforming condition would be welcomed.
Okay, what is non-conforming exactly?
The rear yard, the, I guess the rec room. It goes, it's like 28 feet only into the rear yard. It's not the 30 feet, the requirement.
Yes, actually, it's 26.3 feet.
Yeah, I mentioned that on the...
Okay, but it's not, you know, I want to know the resolution.
It's existing non-conforming.
Because there have been two or three additions onto that house since it was built.
So that the current rear yard...
And they were actually zoning.
So what exactly do you want the resolution to be?
So it actually says in their zoning grid that it's existing non-conforming condition. So I think that if we just follow the zoning grid as part of the resolution, I think it would be okay. It's calling out that 30 is required. We're 26.8.
And that's just if they come up for another variance? That we see all of them are originally, and you know, the paperwork.
Pre-existing, correct.
Got it.
Correct. Right, that makes sense. Okay.
Also, the soil moving. Normally, don't they, I mean, it says it here, "Should the board vote favorably, it must comply with the provisions." We, so, you know, it's important to have the applicant actually tell us how much soil will be moved. They know by the time they come in front of us, they have their architects here, they have their engineers here. It's important that that be part of our applications from now on. Not for your purpose, but I think that's very important that, you know, we should have that from the architect and/or the engineer who's coming with the application.
It will, it will be provided. We need to complete these. These are not for construction. These are just for general scope and discussion.
Well, I know, but see, we have to know what you're doing. And it's important for us to know, are you going to go over? Does it have to go to another board? What's happening? And it's important for us to know that.
Understood. I, in Washington town, is there a major stormwater impairment application in town?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. How many cubic yards is the threshold?
It's all on the website.
400 cubic yards.
Are you planning on expanding the basement or just, would this be crawl space?
Crawl space.
Crawl space?
Okay.
But all that would be subject to? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. I realize that. It's just, and Mr. Morris, is based on John's report, is it required that they have to have the stormwater management in this application?
Yes. There's, because they're over on previous area, so they should be accounting for that as far as stormwater management, Mr.?
And I'm assuming that they will have to supply you the numbers to determine how big, I guess the tank would have to be?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, no problem doing that.
So that would also be subject to? Mm-hmm. So I'll play devil's advocate for one second. Because we're always concerned about going over the numbers. So is it possible, would it be feasible that, let's say, the new addition, for example, could be smaller, so it would reduce the numbers? Or is it just not worth it?
It really wouldn't be worth it, Mr. Chairman. With the house, with the garage element, under the proposed condition is 2,400 square feet. So, you know, the livable area is approximately 2,200 square feet. It's quite a modest house. And I certainly can appreciate the board's concern with trying to adhere to maximums. But again, if we looked at the impervious coverage calculation under the proposed condition, and if we added 1,400 square feet to it, we would be well over. It's just the fact that the applicant was proactive. If they had called me in '23, I would probably, I would have told them, leave that pool and patio there. And because it would be an existing non-conforming condition that we would be getting credit for removing. They were, to their credit, proactive in getting, in eliminating those items. And I certainly would like to have that taken into consideration.
See, my concern is when you get that impervious coverage and you start going over the max, my concern is that water. You know, that's usually why you have to have management control for the water. But I don't want to have the neighbors calling up and saying, all of a sudden, the runoff is going to the neighbors. And the more you cover, the more you cover, it's the more that water can absorb somewhere. It's got to go somewhere.
Understood. You know, prior to this application, the site had, I'm trying to think my existing impervious coverage.
Well, according to, according to the numbers, you were 34.10, according to Mr....
Since the, since the... Since the 80s, when the pool and patio element was put in until 2023, the site had approximately 5,100 square feet of coverage with no onsite stormwater management system. So certainly, if there were no neighbor complaints over that 30-year period of time, having substantially less coverage, there, there won't be any issues. And in addition, we're adding the stormwater management system.
I understand what you're saying. I understand. But land changes, everything shifts, you know, water starts to go in different directions that has never been there before. So I always get concerned when it comes to the impervious coverage. You know, I need to also think about the neighbors, making sure that the neighbors are not affected by any work that's being done on the applicant's property and what could it do to them. That's, that's my concern.
Understood that. I just, if we had 5,000 square feet of coverage for 30 years and were no neighbor complaints, having 3,000 square feet of coverage, obviously, we're not going to generate a neighbor complaints.
Is there a grading on the land?
We'll make, we'll have to submit a grading and drainage plan for Mr. Morris's review or his office's review. And certainly, whatever commentary there is relative to that grading and drainage design will be incorporated and will be a sub, a condition of any approval from this board.
It's a relatively flat site.
Okay.
We'll also review that because it looks like, from my view of this house, the front yard pitches towards the street. I'm not so sure about the rear yard. So you just have to make sure it's directed towards the front yard.
I don't have a tool of it at this point.
Right. We'd have to look at that.
It's just visually, it looks wrong.
Yeah.
Okay.
And ask about the demolition of what, less than 50%?
Ah. Okay. So, so we run into problems with applications in the past with, when it comes to renovations. So we ask a general question, so everybody's on the same page and we get the same answer. Is the applicant taking down more than 51%? No, or 50%? Let me rephrase that, 50%.
Is that contemplating interior renovations or just exterior walls?
Exterior walls.
Right, no.
We're maintaining existing footprints and adding to it.
No, we're just asking a general question, so we have it on, on file.
We're not taking down more than 50%.
That's all I want to hear. Thank you.
In the past, people have said they're bringing addition, and next thing we knew, the house was gone.
Right. And then, and then it became that it needed to go to the planning board and not the zoning board, and it causes a lot of time delay on both sides. So that's usually why we started this new procedure that we're going to ask the custom, ask the applicants when it comes to renovations on their properties.
Understood.
Yeah, that's not what we're indicating, and that's not what we intend to do.
Then we're good. Please go. Does any, other board members have any questions, statements? Let's open it up to the public. Motion to open to the public?
Motion?
Check it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody in the audience would like to come up and ask any questions to the architect? Please state your name and address.
How you doing? I'm Jason Daniele. I'm at 645 Valley Court. I'm the neighbor immediately to the right. Met Neil and Jess back in 2023. I can confirm for the board that the pool has been filled and that it's all grass there. So just to, you know, obviously, I was upset about it because I was looking forward to moving in with a neighbor, with a pool right next door. But it's exciting to fill that in. Also, for the, for the board's edification, directly behind, we're at the end of a cul-de-sac.
Right.
So directly behind us is about, let's say, 30, 40 feet of shrubbery slash woods. I don't know if it's, I'll have to look at the tax map. I don't know if it's specifically an easement. But then it's the condo association. So there's a lot of shrubbery. There's, you know, a lot of bushes and stuff. So, you know, I think certainly with respect to anything impervious, I'd be the only one really that even be able to see it. You're not going to be able to see it. I took a look at the, you know, at the plains myself, and I'm super stoked for that. Really excited to see, you know, a young family like myself moving into the neighborhood. They obviously want to expand. You know, I've gotten to know them in the last couple of years. They're looking to expand their family, just like we are at ours. And it's really nice and refreshing to, to be able to add to community. You know, having, you know, kids like, like my daughter as well, just kind of, you know, drive their bikes around in the neighborhood in the cul-de-sac. So really looking forward to that. With respect to any sort of runoff water, the way that I've been seeing it, everything is in the front, does pitch towards the street. And then everything in the back as well. We haven't had, I don't think we had a single issue at all with any, any sort of water retention. Again, looking at the, at least, certainly no architect, but we're an engineer, but I don't see how that was, I think, 400 square feet would at all cause any, any sort of issue with respect. And on top of the fact that they're also doing the, the extra bonus of having, you know, some either catch basin or water retention for that. You know, I'm just, I seriously hope that the board does consider this. You know, even just speaking, it looks like they, they want to stay in township. They want to grow their family here. And they just, obviously, they, they need an opportunity to do that, you know, just like anybody would. They're in an opportunity to go through the house. Now it's tight. You know, and just they're looking to expand it. Not, not anything that's outlandish, ghoulish, that's going to be the, you know, eyesore. It's, they just want to make it practical and convenient and not all for it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we open up to?
Anybody else?
Oh, anybody, I'm sorry. Anybody else would like to come up? I didn't see anybody else come up. How about on Zoom? Seeing no hands raised on Zoom, motion to close to the upper portion?
Motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Nobody else has any additional questions, statements, comments?
I mean, the only statement I will make is that I think that we have a new zoning ordinance with coverage. So it's kind of new for us voting. In the context of this specific application, if they had just had the original survey, this is entirely a home run application. You're getting rid of the impervious coverage. Well, before, there was no impervious coverage, but right now, the existing house as it stands is over. So there's nothing you could do about that. And I think that's more a statement about the coverage numbers that we've adopted as opposed to what's out there. I think when you look at this addition and comparisons to the fact that this could be an add-on level in, in a cul-de-sac of all branches, you know, and then you've got the, the most adjacent neighbor. I mean, this is a slam dunk project. I can't see how, I couldn't approve this. I should say that.
Yeah. Anyone else? Anybody else? Yeah, I think, I think it's fine for the simple fact that, got to give credit for that 1,800 that they were able to shave off too. So that, that just helps. And the driveway and all that staying the same? Nothing's being affected by that either?
Correct.
Okay. That was another problem. That's what I'm asking.
Understood.
Does our engineer have any other questions or concerns?
No, I don't. Okay.
Can make a motion?
We're going to make a, we're going to make a motion to approve the application subject to soil moving calculations, the stormwater management, making sure that, that, that one variance is back into the resolution. So if anything happens down the road, we know exactly what's there, the rear yard, the rear yard. Mr. Morris, is that, is that it for you?
Yes, it is. Stormwater, stormwater management, and the, you said, the existing non-conforming in the rear, yes.
Right, okay. Nothing else I'm missing?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Do you want, in the resolution that they stated, that it's not more than 50%?
Well, that would be, yeah, we would state that on the map. Yes, yes.
So I'd like to...
And that the driveway is not being moved either?
Correct. I'll make a motion to approve the application as presented with the conditions set for by the chairman, which were soil moving, stormwater, drainage, ratifying the existing non-conforming, the statement that they're not demolishing more than 50% of the perimeter or the structure, of the structure, and not relocating the driveway.
That's what I got.
One second. Grace, roll call, please.
Mr. D'Agostino?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
Yeah.
Mr. Labrada?
Yes.
Mr. Zicko?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Oz.
No.
Thank you all.
Congratulations.
Have a good evening.
Good luck.
Thank you.
We'll get rid of this. 754 Koch, just give me one sec. Yeah, I got it. Next application is going to be the 754 Koch Peak Avenue, block 4103, block 24. It's for the application Christopher and Kimberly Bendick for an addition and alterations. Anybody, yeah. How are you?
Just raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God. And please state your name and, for the record, and please spell it.
Sure, my name is Christopher Bendick. Spelled C-H-R-S-T-O-P-H-E-R. Bendick, B-E-N-D-I-K.
Okay.
Ready?
Ready, all yours.
Well, thank you for allowing me to review my request to be here today. Of course, I'm asking for approval to convert one of our existing garage spaces to create additional indoor living area as part of a renovation to our home. I'm also asking for a small impervious coverage increase for expanded driveway. This change is deeply important to my family. My father-in-law is severely physically disabled with multiple sclerosis. And as our family grows, we realize that our current layout doesn't provide the accessibility or space we need to comfortably and safely care for everyone. Expanding the interior will allow us to create more open, accessible floor plan, plan, excuse me, one that can accommodate mobility needs and allowing to be more independent within our home. We've worked closely with our architect to ensure the redesign is space-saving, cohesive, and aligned with the character of the neighborhood. This modification will truly allow us to stay in our home long-term, keeping our family together under one roof in a way that works for everything. We deeply value our community and take care to ensure that this is the family, all respect for neighborhood, and feel...
Okay. Do, okay.
And just for the record, you were the owner of the property and, yeah?
Me and my wife.
Okay, thank you.
And you're...
Okay, so this is, my architect, this is the...
So you're going to have him testify? This is your only witness?
Yeah, I have my wife.
But I mean, for professionals, for profession, yeah. If you want to, you got to grab the microphone?
Yeah.
It's down there, yeah.
Yes. Right.
Good evening, board members.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
Yes, I do.
And please state your name for the record.
My name is Tomas Bona, T-O-M-A-S-Z, last name Bona, B-O-N-A, of Bonarc Architecture and Design.
Okay. And for the board's edification, can you please give us... And for the board's edification, can you please give us your qualifications, you know, licensing, education, et cetera?
Certainly. I have been licensed in the state of New Jersey since 2010. I have accomplished my higher education with master's in architecture and urban planning back in 2000. And I've been practicing architecture for the last 25 years in a tri-state area. I'm also licensed in the state of Massachusetts. I have been testifying in front of numerous boards across central northern Jersey, most notably in front of this board a couple of years ago on a property located on Calvin Street, also in Demarest, Hohokels, Saddle Brook, Rockaway, Franklin, Kinneland, Summit, Butler, Pompton Lakes, Hoboken, just to name a few. And my license is in a good standing.
In the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
Okay. I would ask that the board accept this witness as a expert witness in architecture.
No problem.
You may proceed.
Certainly, so the applicant, Chris outlined sort of the functional needs of the multi-generational family that will occupy this house that's currently being renovated. Under a permit application, the drawings were filed fully conforming to all zoning ordinance provisions. They secured the permit, the construction is underway. While the construction was underway, they realized that the area that this house offers may not be completely sufficient for multi-generational family and growing family. So then the idea was accepted to potentially ask for a little bit more usable space and convert one of the garages into habitable area. Just a little bit of history, before the construction project started of the addition that's located on the left side of the house at the present time, this was a two-story existing dwelling with a two-car garage that was oriented sideways. So the approach from the driveway was sideways towards the garage doors. And then as a result of the project and expansion toward the left, we reoriented originally the two garage, two garages to be accessible from the front of the house. It's just worked better functionally that way. That also triggered some modifications of the driveway. We eliminated the excessive driveway that's currently on the left side of the house. And we sort of transferred it to the right side of, of the, of the dwelling because we needed to accommodate the access to the second garage that was originally proposed as part of the permitted drawings. This is a, a fully conforming property, 10,000 square feet, 100 by 100. And the building as per current as-built survey that was provided to the board members is fully conforming to all of the setbacks as well. The intricacy of converting one of those garage spaces to habitable space, to habitable area forced us sort of to make sure that we can still park those four, four cars on the property. So we sort of kept the original extents of the driveway. And since we needed to expand a little bit of the driveway to accommodate that newly created parking, that sort of what, the garage that is being proposed is one and a half parking space. I believe it's 11 foot wide, so there's an excessive amount of space inside of the garage that would remain as part of the dwelling. It pushes us with impervious coverage slightly over the limit where 35% is required. We're proposing 37.4, so we're about 240 square feet over. It is worth mentioning that the, the avenue, Koch Peak Avenue is kind of going all the way. It's inclining steadily towards the right side of the property that will be towards east. And all of the existing driveway on this property has a positive pitch towards the street. So there's really no water being discharged onto adjacent properties. And with the expansion of the impervious coverage to keep the existing and accommodate the newly created garage, we would still continue pitching the driveway towards the street. The overall area of the dwelling would be proposed to be at 3,000, about 3,070 square feet. And that excludes the, the newly created garage addition that was originally permitted. So that garage that would remain is 360 square feet. So that's why I'm calling, I'm referring to it as a one and a half sort of garage. So it allows for extra storage in addition to park the vehicle. With the driveway configuration that we're proposing, we can comfortably accommodate four vehicles on the property. So technically it would be two-car garage, two cars inside of the dwelling and then two parked in front of it. In the configuration that we're describing, keeping the overflow driveway that exists currently at the present time on the left side, on the, on the west side of the building. This sort of allows us to park second car. And then we have plenty of space to park additional two cars in front of, of the dwelling, which was also important for the applicant considering the fact that it's a multi-generational family. This is a two-story, sort of a bi-level dwelling. So the lower level that has the garage or the two garages at the present time, sort of transverse, it, it's sort of, from the west to east, the grade is sloping upwards. So on east end of the house, we're partially underground, it becomes more of a basement. Whereas on the west side where the garage is located, we're pretty much at the grade elevation. So unfortunately, about a third of the available habitable area falls, you know, the, sort of partially underground, more so as a basement rather than actual floor. So that is, we, we don't really have a way to expand to accommodate the needs. I mean, technically with the height limit, we could add another floor, but the owner's not interested in expanding upwards. And we would still fit within the building height limit, which is 30 feet. So the only available opportunity for us here is to ask for permission to convert one of those garage spaces that we created into a habitable area. So the idea is also that since the in-laws are sort of limited as far as the, their ability to move around and scale the steps, that having that ground level, which is pretty much at the grade elevation, that helps a lot because the in-laws can access the habitable space at the lower level directly from the driveway elevation without use of any steps. So that's a huge benefit actually for the applicant as well, to be able to accommodate them at that lower level while their primary family occupies the upstairs. We've have also created additional, we made additional provisions for the bedroom and the exit, emergency conforming exit from the bedroom that was also permitted under the original set of drawings. To make sure that we have that fully code conforming bedroom located on the lower level. So we believe that this application is not necessarily creating any nuisance to the neighborhood. Are there other dwellings around this neighborhood with two-car garage? Yes, absolutely. Most of the houses surrounding this property has the two garages. However, due to the nature of, of the applicant's functional family needs, we're hereby requesting consideration and approval of converting one of those spaces.
Okay. Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Can we get your input into this application, please?
Sure. There, again, they're all going over an impervious area, so they will need stormwater management. One question I have is to, for four cars, it's a pretty large driveway. The front is 30 by 30 and the back portion is 17 by 20. I mean, both parking spaces are 9 by 18. So it's-
That's true.
Can fit probably a lot more than four cars. And you know, they're over on impervious, I don't know if you want to consider knocking that down a little bit. But, you know, they did. And the other issue we have is we have not seen a building height calculation. We just, we just received the survey very recently. As a matter of fact, it's dated 11/325. So we would like building height calculations on the left side, especially since it's a garage number.
I see in the, in John's engineer report, it's talking about the curb cut. So my, so my question is, if we're going from a two-car garage down to a one-car garage, right? Is not curb cut need to be put back?
Well, they're asking, they have existing, looks like either a 12 or 15 foot wide curb cut. They're asking for a 22 moved to the right about 10 feet. The existing curb cut is on their property line.
What's the orange for curb cuts, 22?
22.
22?
Yeah.
Whether it's a one-car garage or a two-car garage, it doesn't matter?
It doesn't matter. I think it's the total has to add up to 22.
Total width, okay.
So if there is a lot of 22, they're asking for a 22, their existing looks like about a 12 or 15.
So they're looking to make it wider to the right?
Yes. So then the edge of the expanded driveway aligns with the newly created addition, which has the one-car garage, one and a half car garage within it.
Can I ask how come the garage was built already?
Oh.
I'm sorry, the garage?
The garage is be, was built already.
So this new addition is built, yes?
Yeah, it was built. I mean, you're coming into the board to say you're getting rid of the two, are you going to put the one up? You can't come to the board if you've already, I mean, you can, I mean, you're supposed to. You can't build before you get permission. May I ask how come this occurred? I went last month to look at the house and it was framed. I went Sunday and it's done.
But there's no issues with what's being built. It was fully permitted and it's fully conforms to zoning ordinance.
Yeah, but you're in violation of the zoning order, of the zoning.
We're not.
You don't have a second car garage there.
We do.
We are.
On the buildings that are in the building department that was permitted, we are showing two-car garage.
But you don't show it at the house. There's windows, I mean, you show what you have here.
What, what she's saying is your permits at the building department says there's two-car garage, but right now there is not two-car garage, it's only a one-car garage.
I'm not sure if the wall where the second car garage is supposed to be located has been already open, maybe it hasn't been.
But you can't get a car to go through there and there and that doesn't work.
That, that's correct. May I speak to you?
Sure, yeah.
So the reason for that, I'm sorry, Mary Ann, the reason for that is because in order for me to open up the land to make room for that second garage that was previously approved, I, I need to excavate a, a, a large amount of interior. So.
So you removed some of the soil that's already was there?
Well, we removed the soil that was there to accommodate for the new addition.
And that's the reason why we need soil permits and all that stuff, based on, on the-
Yeah, I have that all.
Okay. But, but what she's saying, and I agree, is that you put the cart before the horse. Because if this board decides to turn you down, you got to put it back to what it was.
We, we don't need to change anything, we just continue with the original project.
Correct, that's what we're saying.
No, you have to take it down and put the side-
That, that house, that house had a two-car garage.
Right, which entered from the side, that front wall is still the front wall of that garage. The plan original, if I, if I'm correct, was to put a garage door on the front and maintain the two-car that way with this addition.
That is correct.
If you could have, yeah, but they didn't do that.
So if we didn't approve it, he would have to put that garage door there.
Right, he would actually have to take care of that.
Which would just be a continuation of the construction by opening up that wall.
Right.
That's right.
That is, that is correct.
And that should be done.
If I may, here's actually a portion of the permitted drawings, which shows, you can see the two garage doors in the front.
Okay, but that's not what's there.
No, that is correct, that's why we-
Because it hadn't been opened.
Because they just didn't continue that work.
Yeah, but you can't do that. You can't do that because, I mean, you built something that now is, when you say, well, you can't do that. I mean, and now you have to redo it, I mean, this is not-
We don't need to redo it, anything, we are not in violation with anything, we're just-
To be honest with you, garages are one thing in this town that they're very, very strict about. And they, it's everywhere and they insist on having garages. We've had applicants come here who want to put a garage up and need a variance. Well, that's okay because now you're actually enhancing our land use because you're putting in something that's important in this town. Taking away one garage is not something that's done. I've seen many times that people have tried to do it and they've lifted the doors up and they've done the interiors. Houses, bi-levels, just like that. And they're, have to redo them back to the original. So this is what happens.
We have no intent of doing something illegal, so that's why we're here.
Right, but what we're saying is, is that if the board decides not to approve the application, you're going to have to put it back to what it was. Well, it's not back to. Well, you have to put the door there and excavate that wall. You have to put the second door back in order to make it what it was. That's what their current, their original grid showed. Yeah. Right. Was two garages there.
Yes.
Completely understood.
So they just didn't open up that wall. And I, I am, I'm on, on the same page as Mary Ann and looking for some way to take this single-car garage and make it a two-car garage. Still, while not necessarily taking away the space you need, because again, it is something that we've been pushing very much so for having two-car garages on any construction. And I don't know, I'm not an architect, but I would love to see if, if we wanted to keep a two-car garage. Like my first question was going to be, how much space between the setback and the new wall is there? Was going to be my first question.
At the present time, we have 17 and a half.
Yeah, 17 and a half from the old wall to the setback?
From the property line to the new, newly constructed addition.
Okay. I mean, me personally, and I can't speak for the rest of the board, I'd be more inclined to grant a little bit more impervious coverage and maybe an incursion into the setback to make that a 22-foot wide two-car garage there than I would be to approve taking away garage. And I don't know if the rest of the board kind of feels the same. But that, my personal inclination would be more inclined to that and maintaining a two-car garage or cutting a little bit into the proposed living space to gain some of that.
I think you could cut into that living space that's down in that, the two-
For 22 feet, you're five feet short. So even if you did two feet on one side and went to the setback and took two feet from the living space or two and a half feet actually on each side, that would keep you within the setback and give you the two cars inside, which, which again, is, is been a very big push for the town as a whole and it's, it's required of any new construction that it must be a two-car garage.
And in 1986 is when they actually put in this, you know, the ordinance that said you must have in that zone a two-car garage. And, you know, people have come before and once you start saying, well, you don't have to have a garage anymore, a second garage, then you're going to get lots of people, and I know it's supposed to be on the applications that we vote on, but still. Once, and especially since I guess I'm most upset about the fact that it's, I went by there on Sunday after church. And there's the one car, and it's done. I mean, it's siding on it, it's painted to match. I mean, we're not talking about a, a shell like it was last month when we were-
That's a planned addition that was-
Yeah, that was, that was the existing side.
Conforming garage, the permit application.
The other one wasn't done. So if the other one had been done, I would have said, well, okay, but it wasn't done the way the plans work. So you went against the plans that you gave to our building department.
I'm, I'm not building the house.
No, no, but I'm-
My drawings are showing two garages and the intent is to construct two garages.
But these plans aren't showing two garages.
Because those are the plans that we're submitting.
Right, now they're asking us to change.
We're asking.
They would continue building, I, I, I understand where, where they're coming from with that, but I'm still, I'm still of the opinion that somehow we should find a way to keep a two-car garage. I mean, me, my house has no garage, I wish my house had.
Oh, sure, and then most people, and I have a two-car garage and only needed one car, but I have to maintain that too. I'm not allowed and I live in a smaller zone.
Would you consider kind of changing the plan so you could keep the two-car garage?
You go back to the plan that went to the building department.
And make it work?
I mean, as much as I would love to do that, you know, our budget has kind of reached a peak, you know, and, you know, in, in order to build a second garage, like, like you said, if I were to go out another seven feet to make a second garage, I believe that would take a lot of engineering work, you know, and substantially a lot, a lot of money to do so.
See, we, we, this town fights to, to keep garages the way they are.
I understand.
And, and, and what Mrs. Augman is saying is that applications in the past who want to put a second garage, we made it happen, you know, so, because then they're in conform to the town's ordinance. We don't like going the reverse, we really don't. Unless, unless it's a really, really bad hardship that there's no possible reason and everything's been looked at and there's no solutions, then maybe, it's just, that's a maybe, but we're, we're coming up with some kind of a resolution here
Yeah.
for Mr. Zickel, which is a decent resolution that says, hey, you can keep the two car garage if you do this, this and that.
Right.
You know, and, and redo the plan so we have a new survey and new plans and all that stuff, because all of that would have to be updated anyway.
Right.
But dealing with the interior, can't you just, I mean, interiorly, I mean, wouldn't it be easier to take away? I mean, what you have here, it's an entertainment room, some of it.
Can we mark that forever? What is that, that he gave to you, if we could mark that?
Those are the original drawings that are in the building department.
Oh, is it something in the plan?
Yeah, the permit drawings, yes, yes.
The office and, and some of the entertainment room, if you take away, there's your second car garage. I mean, it's interior work.
We have it on the drawings, on the permitted drawings, we have two car garage.
Right.
Please understand that this house doesn't have a basement, there's not another layer, level, storage or extra space. So we're really constrained with, you know, storage and inhabitable space and garage as, as is. But it's also important to mention that, you know, we're not introducing an opportunity for cars to park on the, on the street because we are still providing plenty of street parking on the property. So we are easily accommodating for vehicles. And I think the, in principle, those ordinances requesting for two garages will try to reduce the opportunity where the cars will be parked on the street.
Mrs. Augman, Mrs. Augman, just give us, just give one second, go ahead.
So I believe a document was handed over.
What document was just given?
I think it was a copy of.
It's just a portion of the building, of the construction permit drawings.
Can we submit that into evidence as an exhibit? And then pass that around the board so that we can, we can see it?
Is it something different or alone?
It's different, it's the file.
Previously approved plans that they started the construction based off of that are not completed because then they turned around and said, okay, we need more space and are now asking to modify those.
Yeah, this is the part of the permit application, permitted drawings that are in the building department. So you can see the two cars parked inside, that's our two car garage and this is the shape of the driveway, right? So we took out all of this portion.
So let's do this, let's first put this into exhibit and then we can.
Let me just take a look for a second.
And the other is a portion of the, of the, that level plan and elevation.
So it makes A one.
And then A two.
These are two different?
And then there's an A three, I believe.
Okay.
So I think there's a couple of copies floating around.
So A one through A three, these are, these are site plan?
Yes.
That was, that's submitted to the building department?
That's the permitted site plan.
For the original permit?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay, so, and what is the date of these?
May sixteen, two thousand twenty five.
So that's A one through three?
Yes, and that set of drawings is.
May sixteen, two thousand twenty five is the site plan, it's a part of the permitted application prior to the zoning.
That is correct.
And just one more, right?
So, so, I'm a little confused.
Let me, let me just ask a question that I think helps all of us in this. So right now, from the outside, obviously, there's no garage door there. What is the current state of construction on the interior? Where is that at in terms of from the old plans to the new plans?
It's framed out as a, you know, like canvas as of now.
So where is the, that beam at the end of the house? Is that beam still there?
The original beam?
The, the beam that was the end, well, I guess it was two garage doors at the time.
That's correct.
So what is there now? What replaced that?
That, that is an existing masonry wall of the first level is built out of masonry. So the intent was just to leave these open and the second garage was next to it, so.
So you were, you were gonna keep the, the column in between the two doors plus the previous walls?
Yeah, which is this wall, yeah.
Okay.
So that's, that's what we.
And that still exists right now?
Yes, it's all achievable to be built, there's no issues with us constructing it. The owner is in need of a little bit more.
Well, where I, where I was going then isn't something that's gonna be able, my thought wouldn't be able to be done then because there's no support to be here. Well, anything can be done.
You'd have to eliminate that wall.
So realistically, the only way to make that a two car garage now without going back to the original plan would be to add, how wide is this garage right now?
Um.
Fourteen?
Fourteen and a half.
So you'd have to add.
Thirteen and a half, yeah.
Thirteen and a half, so seven, eight, nine, you'd have to add about just under ten feet, which would then.
You don't need a full twenty two.
We would need to suspend the second floor.
Fifteen.
It's a complicated structurally solution.
And how much space between the new and the, the setback?
We have seventeen and a half.
Actually, the survey shows eighteen feet.
Eighteen feet.
Yeah.
So if we did, if you had to add a second garage on that side, you'd be more than five feet into the setback. Fourteen, to hit twenty two feet, you'd be about seven feet into the setback.
Do you really need twenty two feet though?
Sixteen, sixteen you can get away with.
Yeah, you could do that, it is tight, but it would classify as a two car garage. So that might be, that might be the answer is to just bring it to the setback line and make it a two car garage with one door and that would minimize any major engineering.
I am agreeing.
Good. What I don't, what I don't understand is this was submitted to the building department.
This way, they just haven't opened this wall yet. Inside is not constructed.
Right, but it's still shown, but on the May reports, it showed two car garage.
Yes, that's what was the plan, now they're asking to modify that, but, no, not after. They, they, during the course of construction, they realized that they needed more space and now they're asking for permission to take what was gonna be a two car garage and go against.
Okay.
And ask for a variance.
I see how you're reading that, you do.
So they, they've essentially stopped construction now, waiting for us to either approve or deny this. If we deny it, they will continue knocking down this wall, putting the door there, making that a garage.
That is correct.
Okay.
I'll, I'll go down that page.
So what I'm trying to say is, how do we get them both? How do we satisfy the two car garage without a, a great burden by engineering a new beams and everything?
If I'm hearing correctly, the board would be satisfied with eighteen foot garage with maybe a sixteen foot door, overhead door? Is that something?
That's what I'm trying to hash out in not only my mind, but just in general for everybody.
What, what part of the meeting are we in? Are we in questions for the architect?
Well, the architect.
We're still in the architect.
Yeah.
So I think that I can provide some clarity that maybe everybody would find, but I don't think this is the appropriate time to voice that. I think I, I don't have any questions for the architect, I think he stated the case very well. I, I understand it.
Let's open it to the public, let's see if we get their inputs and then we'll go back to us.
Back to this line.
Any other board members or?
Well, let's, let's, let's see, yeah, let's. Mr. Morris, do you have any additional information?
No, that's it. Yeah, what, you know, as I said, the, the original plan showed for the two car garage and eliminating the side piece of the driveway. So by leaving that side piece of the driveway, that's why they're over on impervious and they're up to thirty seven percent right now.
May I add, I'm more than flexible of accommodating for the, what's supposed to be impervious coverage. I'm flexible with removing some of the driveway.
We brought the impervious coverage down.
Let's go over on building coverage.
Right, let's, let's.
It's the variance.
Okay, let's open it to the public first and then let's go forward. Motion to open to the public?
Some of them.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody in the audience would like to have any questions for the architect for this application? Anybody on Zoom? Motion to close to the public?
Second.
I'll second it.
Motion to close, motion to close.
Close the public. You got it?
I did the motion.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now from the board, do we have any additional questions, solutions, possibilities?
So I think we should go through John's letter and do the fifty percent question.
Okay, yes, I'm sorry, you're right, we're forgetting, you're right.
That's all right.
Just like before with the other application, we have to ask this one question. Is in your renovation, are you taking more than fifty percent down for any of the walls?
I'm sorry.
Are you removing any, are you removing fifty percent of the additional, of the current coverage of your home to make this renovation happen?
More than fifty percent of the walls.
More than fifty percent of the walls.
Yes.
No.
No, no?
Pretty much hundred percent of the perimeter of the building is stayed, we're putting in addition.
So the answer is no?
That's correct.
That's all I need to know, thank you. Okay, now, let's come back to the board.
So, so looking at this, we came out a little hot, nobody, I don't think that they were trying to pull anything.
No, I, I don't.
I wanna be very clear.
Okay.
And I actually, so, you know, I, I have the benefit of being in architecture and construction, we see this often, so whether their intent was to do this or not, doesn't actually matter to me. I think that.
We come up with a solution, let's come up with a solution.
They're here now, right, they, they submitted a set of plans that complies with all of the zoning regulations they got under construction and, you know, they were able to build it and we got to this point, okay?
So what's the solution?
So from my perspective, you know, I'm, I'm surprised to hear the opposition to the two cars personally. I think that this is one of those projects that you're stuck between a rock and a hard place. I think the average person, we're hearing it on this own board. It's, the code was developed in, in eighty six, there are a lot of people that don't need to. If we could get people to not expand their houses, not make them bigger, but make more usable square footage that's green, that's environmentally conscious, I think it's doing all of the things that a good architect and a good citizen does, you know? I think the reality is, is that you could drive, every zone is different, but you drive down Colonial, most of those are one, one car, right? It's not like a one car garage is the only, like, this would be the only house with a one car garage. You know, the point of the side entry is that you're not seeing the garage door from the street, but the reality is, is that everybody parks in their driveway anyway. So what are we really trying to accomplish with that? I, there are situations here that we don't take into consideration as a hardship or can't, but they're, they're evident. I think that they could make the impervious coverage less. I don't personally think that they, they need the, forgive me for saying it this way, but I don't think that you need a twenty two foot curb cut. I don't think, I, I just don't see that as necessary. I think making the left side come a little bit closer to the impervious, I mean, we're, we're, how many square feet in the, in the new, this is the old, this is what they submitted, this is the compliant. How many square feet over on impervious coverage are we?
Thirty seven point four.
Thirty seven point four.
Where thirty five is required, so it's less than ten percent over. It's not really de minimis, I mean, if it was a point, then it's a little bit more palatable to me, especially coming off the heels of when they probably drew this, we didn't have a zoning requirement for impervious coverage, so.
So what are you suggesting, reduce the curb cut down a little bit?
I'm saying, suggest, bring down the impervious coverage a little bit.
We can certainly accommodate reduction in impervious coverage on the left side especially, so we're gonna move the paving away from the, from the neighboring property, the edge of the paving.
And this is without regard to what you've done or not done or what you have to do. I think just practicality of whether you constructed it or not, knocking down a bearing foundation wall is costly, it, it's wasteful. I don't know, I, I would, I, I personally don't have much trouble with the, the one car variance for all the reasons I just said and the impervious. I think they could technically even get it to comply without compromise. For, if you took, if this driveway is thirty and another twenty, fifty, you know, if you, probably if you took two or three feet off the width of the driveway and, that's, that's a hundred and fifty square feet.
Where you take four feet off the driveway to still fit all the cars.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, that'd bring it right down.
May I add something? So there's actually only gonna be two tops, three cars in the driveway? Well, one will maybe be in the garage also. And, yeah, so there's only three. And I'm more than happy to add, you know, all kinds of landscaping and whatever I could to, you know, hide the cars in the driveway.
It's not, it's not that, what he's, what he's suggesting to eliminate the one car garage, if you could shrink down the driveway
Sure.
and reduce that maximum impervious coverage, you might, depending on how the board feels, you might have a better favor than you would if you said, no, I can't do nothing and that's the way to the end.
Then the only variance, if he brings that down to the thirty five, then the only variance is one car versus two car.
Right, so, so we, you know, there's, it's like a give and take.
Right, you know, as a design exercise, a front facing garage takes up way less impervious coverage than a side facing.
Okay.
So from that perspective alone, if I were, if I were to give you advice, my, my advice would be comply with the curb, impervious and seek the single variance.
We are definitely flexible from that.
We can certainly adjust the entire west edge of the driveway along the neighbor's property and the, and the back edge towards the rear yard, which that portion of driveway is a legacy of the original garage, which was accessible from the side. And we can certainly fall within the, back within the thirty five percent limit.
Saying no to one, yes for the others.
It's getting favorable, you know, I mean, I get the.
And everybody's hotspot is impervious.
We have thirteen and a half wide garage, so certainly there's plenty of opportunity for, for them to park the car and have ample amount of storage within the same shell of that garage. It's thirteen and a half by, it's, it's a, it's a pretty decent sized garage, it's three hundred and sixty square feet. So it's thirteen and a half by.
It's a lot bigger than mine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That cabin's apparent.
It's almost like one and three quarters.
By about twenty three feet.
Yeah, that's like.
That's interior, interior dimension.
Right, that's like one and three quarter dry, garages, so it's, it's huge.
Yes, and that, that was the objective too, to make sure that, because there's no basement, so.
Right.
Athletic is limited, the roof is not that.
And there's no, and there's no shed on this profiting?
With the four hundred square foot requirement, the minimum for the garage?
Yeah, so I think that's another variance, actually.
What's that?
That you have to have a minimum of four hundred square feet?
Yes, two hundred, two hundred, yes.
So then we go down to two hundred, so that's not another variance.
If it's, if it's, the minimum has to be two hundred, if it's one ninety nine, you need a variance.
Oh, okay, gotcha, all right, so then we're good.
Good, that's what I'm saying, the, the idea works well in this case.
So, so to be in, in, in your favor, you might wanna consider like eighteen feet. You know, that, that should put you, you know, slash down your, your impervious coverage and you should be in, in a good position just to apply for a variance.
Are you talking about the curb cut?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll say it again, we're supposed to be here to uphold our ordinances, not to come up with a way for someone to go against our ordinances. That's not what this board was put in, was here for. I mean, this is two car garage, it was a two car garage, you could build the one car garage and just put the other section, the interior is not being lost and, and it's not that much of a hardship then. But the, the ordinances state what they are and that's why we're here. We're, I mean, this is not a land problem, there's no problem with, you know, having to give the variance for the land and, and this, it doesn't uphold our ordinances, which the other, you know, I, I, I'm sorry, it's just, it's ridiculous that, you know, we're gonna have a one car garage. Bi-levels are made that way, you don't buy a bi-level and think, oh, I'm gonna have a garage, you don't. I mean, when you buy a bi-level, you know what you have, you have the downstairs area, you have extra rec room down there, I mean, it looks like there's even enough area of wet bar, I mean, that could be put into another kitchen. So you could actually put this into a two family house very quickly now with this new addition, the way it's done. Very quickly, this could be a two family house. You can have, just, in my estimation, this is not something that's the board should approve, but, you know, it's up to the board.
Well, that's the reason why we have individual votes, so, so let's, let's go from there. Any other suggestions, comments? Okay. I'm gonna do something I normally don't do. I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna make a vote to approve the application subject to several things. I would. What, there's no height issue?
It says twenty four feet. It says twenty-four feet.
We're good because it was a question.
It says it's a plus. Yeah, we, we had a question to height, because we didn't have a survey when we wrote the letter. We have a survey, uh, we, it looks like the height complies, because it's, it's a short height area, it's only twenty-five feet.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you do have the survey or you don't have the?
We just got a survey.
You just got it tonight?
Yeah.
So is the height an issue or not an issue?
I don't believe it is, I believe the height is about twenty-two feet and twenty-five feet is max.
Right.
Should be okay.
Okay, the height is twenty-two point one, at the, from the lowest grade elevation at the garage to the peak of the roof.
Right.
Your ordinance states that the height is measured from average grade elevation. So even calculated from the lowest grade, we're eight feet below the, the threshold in the limit.
What we'd like to see before you get a resolution is, uh, the height calculations in accordance with the survey. In accordance with the ordinance and the survey. I think that's written in the letter too.
I mean, we, we have heights shown on the building elevations.
I know, but there's, there's a formula that has to be used and you have to show that formula on your plan.
Certainly, we can edit it.
So, I'm making an approval to approve the application subject to, um, several items. One is the height calculations for the engineer. Um, I would also like to see a new updated blueprint showing all the changes that we talked for tonight. So the engineer can review it, that's my, that's what I would like to see. Um, we also need, um, soil, uh, movement calculations, we also need stormwater management calculations.
I'm sorry, we're reducing and falling back within the impervious, uh, coverage limitations. Do we need the stormwater calculations? I'm not sure.
We want to make sure of runoff.
I was so. You, you still are increasing the impervious area. So it should comply with whatever was admitted.
I think we committed, we committed to go back to the thirty-five percent limit.
So if you go.
You had a thirty-five cent percent today, you're thirty-three thousand two hundred, you're thirty point two and you're going up to thirty-five. We want to see some kind of stormwater management calculations, but I think one of the conditions, you want to bring them down to thirty-five percent.
Correct.
Yes.
So if we bring them down, if it goes back down to thirty-five, then we?
It's still an increase in impervious area.
Right, okay. So we still need?
And our, our town ordinance requires stormwater manager. And they have that already, presumably, because they submitted a construction permit or issued a permission. I, I'm assuming so, yes. So.
We need, we need an updated one?
I think we're supposed to ask the applicant if they want to go to a vote, hearing what they say. And then what the applicant would say.
Okay.
Is.
I kind, I kind of went both ways, okay.
So your, your motion has these.
Right.
These conditions and with maximum.
So, so the question's based on what we have come up with, do you want to?
I have a question for that.
Okay.
Um, or at least before we vote on the new plans. It's stating, and maybe they just need to correct it, two car garage maintained as per five eighty-eighty-four B. They're not, on these plans maintaining the two car garage, so I would just ask that that be corrected as a condition also.
Okay.
Um, just so that it reads the way it's.
Way it's gonna be.
As in pro, and if we approve it.
Say that again, that condition.
Right here, um, it states on the, on the new plans, two car garage maintained as per five eighty dash eighty-four B.
Where is that?
I'm sorry.
Right into the.
Which joint?
Right here.
Oh, oh, okay.
So, and, and the plan, it's just, that's probably carried over from the original.
Yep.
So I just think, for any reason, it should just be corrected so that it's correct as, as if we approved it, that it's corrected to state what's actually being done.
And that should be added for the update.
So that would just be deleted, because it wouldn't need to state that anymore.
Okay.
Yes, so, um, the conditions, if we can just understand the.
And, and the applicant agrees to it.
Certainly, the, the height calculations, we're gonna provide that, uh, reduction of impervious coverage to meet the thirty-five percent threshold.
So no more than what, thirty-five percent, right?
So they're. Comply with the thirty-five percent threshold.
So we're only voting on one variance, which is the, the one car garage.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, with the driveway not being wider than eighteen feet, if I heard correctly?
Now, does that create, by bringing it under twenty-two, does that make that non-conforming?
No.
I just want to make sure, okay, just want to make sure that.
Yeah, I think it was between twelve and twenty-two.
Yeah.
So the driveway no wider than eighteen?
Eighteen feet. And no less than twelve, correct?
Right.
That's what I want to get to, the minimum.
Less than twelve, okay.
And?
Is, one more, was there any other conditions?
You have height calculations.
Any purpose coverage.
Soil movement.
Soil, right. So we're gonna redo the soil movement for more?
I'm sorry.
Revised, yeah.
Oh, and the revised plans.
Revised plans with all changes discussed, soil movement, stormwater calculation, reducing the maximum impervious coverage to no more than thirty-five percent. Um, correcting the plans with regard to the, what the two car garage maintained.
And.
Basically removing that.
Just remove that.
Removing that language.
But also showing, also showing that the driveway cut's gonna be smaller than what it pertains to.
Well, that would be the revised plans.
Right.
With the reduction.
Right.
Driveway and with the driveway not wider than eighteen feet.
Correct.
Not, no less than twelve feet.
Yes, we have five items on this.
Are you okay with that?
May I ask what the soil moving permit would be for? I'm almost certain in our previous plans that were approved, we, we had the soil moving permit. Forgive me for asking.
No, no, no.
We haven't seen it.
We just want the calculations.
Okay, okay.
That should be already done, they just, we just haven't seen that.
Okay.
If you already submitted one, they just get.
Yeah.
It's there also.
Got it, got it. Yeah, I'm, I'm almost certain, I talked to Mr. Yekimik about that.
Right, okay. But we just, we just don't have it in the package, that's why we're putting it all in on a resolution.
Okay.
Is there a, an ordinance that talks exactly what's required for the stormwater calculations?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm talking to Mr. Yekimik, uh, this is standard ordinance for all, all increase impervious area, what you have, how you have to comply with it.
Okay. So then we're going down to, uh, and you're okay with all this?
Yes.
So I can, okay.
Absolutely.
So then, then the approval would be basically reducing the garage down from two to one.
Correct.
For the variance.
For the variance.
With all, yeah, we, we make a condition, a motion to approve the application.
From, from two car garage?
I can make that.
Yeah, go ahead, not a second.
I'll make a motion to approve the application as presented with the exception to the removal of the impervious coverage. So we are, uh, requesting a demonstration of the height calculation, uh, reduction of the curb cut from twenty-two proposed down to eighteen, um, revised plans being submitted to update the proper terminology. And then the incorporating the statement that they're not removing more than fifty percent of the walls.
Correct.
That's, that's the motion.
I'll second it. Local, please.
Mr. Dagostino?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
Mr. Labrada?
Yes.
Mr. Zicka?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Osborne?
Yep.
You're good.
Congrats, good luck.
Congrats, good luck. Thank you. You're welcome. Yeah, we can do that. Yeah, we can get that done. Let me just get some more, uh, paper. Nice. If, uh, we're gonna just kind of move things a little bit different, if everybody doesn't, not mine, um.
Is there another page that is? Here too. Put that all together.
This is part of it too? This is just the survey. That's the aspect. Yeah, that we have. Take care.
Take care, you're welcome.
No, because I, I look for it.
Same to you. Okay, um, what was it, twenty-five what?
Twenty-five eighteen is extended, I did it extended.
Hey, where's it on my sheet of paper?
On the last.
Okay, uh, resolution ZB twenty-five dash eighteen to approve the application of Tarek and Tracy and Gab, Gab, Gabber?
Gab.
Gab, sorry. To extend the resolution ZB twenty-four sixteen for an addition to be located at two forty-nine Walnut Street, block four four one six, lot twelve. A variance for the building coverage was issued. So I know it's in the paperwork.
So we, Ms. Gabber?
Yeah, why don't you come up to the podium? And we'll swear you in.
Okay.
So, do you swear, sorry, raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony about to give this word is the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God?
I do.
Okay. So this was an application that was approved back in twenty twenty-four, um, for variance relief with regard to an addition to the left side and rear yards along with expansion of the garage on the left side of dwelling and existing driveway, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And you're here now asking for an extension?
Correct.
Because one year has passed and.
Correct.
Can you let the board know the reasons why you need an extension?
I think we underestimated the, the, um, challenge in finding a contractor and securing finances and being a hundred percent certain that this is what we were doing. So it, it did take a little, uh, longer for us to secure a contractor that we were comfortable with, that, that fell within our budget. Um, we made a very good faith effort in moving forward because we applied for the building permits back in September. Um, and we, you know, thought we were gonna be well on our way and the extension, the, the expiration crept up on us, so.
So you actually have submitted?
Oh, yes, back in September, we're still waiting, yeah, we're still waiting for that, because I think they're waiting for the engineer's report, but we submitted, um, everything back in September, yeah.
And I'm assuming that the construction will be done within the next eleven months?
We're waiting for that building permit.
Well, once you get the building permit.
We are shoveling the ground the next day, yes. It, we were supposed, you know, we were supposed to start, our plan was to start, um, as soon as we got the building permits, because we thought it would be about four, four weeks. So we were planning to start in October, so we're ready to go, everything is ready, we're just waiting on those permits.
So the plans are submitted or they're not submitted? Were they submitted for permit?
Oh, yeah, September twenty-fifth, the, the building permits?
Yeah.
Yes, the, the contractor submitted everything in September. The building permits were submitted September twenty-fifth, um, and waiting for everything to come back, then the, the, uh, variance expired.
You have to commence construction. Oh, it's commencement of construction, oh, it's not that.
Right, right, I, I, yeah, I thought, we thought it was the good faith effort of doing the building permits, but it's not. It's the commencement and that's, that's fine, so that's why we requested the extension.
Assuming the board approves the extension, then you can get your permits and start the job?
Um, that's a question for, yeah, we're waiting on, uh, engineer reports for the last many weeks, so.
From us?
Um, I wish, from you.
Your eyes on you.
I wish.
Oh, I don't worry, it's okay. At this point, you've submitted your permits and you're waiting feedback from, from the engineer or from the.
The engineer has confirmed for the last, um, probably about four weeks that he was ready to submit his letter, but just has not submitted the letter. Yeah, we were, we were, it was confirmed that there are no issues, he didn't see any, foresee any issues, he worked with our architect.
It's in progress right now.
It's submitting, yeah, so I, I believe, um, that's the only thing outstanding, and once that's done, then the permits can be.
And what you're intending to do, there's no deviation?
No, none at all, none at all. What was approved is what we're doing.
Okay. Did it make a motion to approve ZB twenty-five dash eighteen, motion?
Second.
Local?
Mr. Dagostino?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
Mr. Labrada?
Yes.
Mr. Zicka?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Osborne?
Yes.
You're good.
Thank you.
So now you want to.
I do have a question, but I don't know if it's worth. You guys?
Mr. Chairman? I'm sorry.
I have a question, and Grace has been wonderful, because she knows I'm very not familiar with this process, but who can I ask about going to, who, how can we get this engineer's report that seems to be out, that seems to be the only thing that's outstated? And how long does it take?
So what I know of as of right now is you need the board to approve it and then you need a resolution to extend it.
Right.
So, 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 in the nor, right, in the normal process, the board approves it one month and then the resolution is finalized the next month, next board meeting, okay?
She's asking who should go to.
No, building permit.
Right, right, but.
Yeah.
Engineer reports.
Right, but in this case, Gary has the resolution to help the process go forward. So I think once this gets to the building department then and the engineer, it will start to go faster.
So the, so the building, the engineer's report was contingent on?
The extension, yes.
Okay, okay. So then, I, because I just, I was worried that we would move on and we would be waiting, you know, endlessly and, you know, to, to no resolution.
No, but in the, in the normal world.
Yeah.
It would be, it would have been another month.
Right.
But he's do, he's a courtesy, he's doing the resolution.
Oh, I see, yeah, I appreciate it.
To get it done quicker for you.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Right, okay.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
You're welcome. ZB twenty-five seventeen, which I can't find. Give me one second. I got it. So the next is resolution ZB twenty-five dash seventeen, authorization to, uh, advertise for requests and qualifications for the RFQ for legal, planning, and engineering services. Uh, what else?
I said I included the, you know.
And in the package is also, is also the, um.
It's due December twenty-ninth, is that the deadline?
Yes, that's the deadline.
Don't be late, Gary. Tell John, don't be late.
And did everyone see the, um, tentative dates for next year?
Yes.
With the reord being January thirteenth?
So I.
That was in the package.
Right, right, once, I don't understand, i- if, if it's the third Tuesday of the month, why did you put down February tenth as the second Tuesday?
Because, because we had calendar problems all year. So I, I moved the January meeting up because Martin Luther King Day.
Right.
Um, was, so, so the council would meet that Monday, but they get kicked to our day.
Right, so what, what will January?
President's Day.
I moved us up a week.
So what will be January for us, January what?
January thirteenth will be the reord. So it's, instead of the third Tuesday, it's the second Tuesday, because the council is taking.
We're doing the week before.
Yes, same thing with this month, we're doing the week before because, uh, the third Tuesday, we're closed for President's Day.
I, I know, we doing the reorg and the meeting the same night?
Yeah, if, if we have, we're doing the reord, if we have.
A meeting, we're gonna do it the same night?
A meeting, I mean, right now I don't have anybody scheduled for the.
All right, but I just.
Patty's Day off? Yeah, I never heard of that.
And the same thing for November, I moved it up a week because.
Because of leaks, like now.
So.
Okay.
Just bad calendar.
So March you moved up?
Yeah, March you moved up.
So Patty's Day?
Onto same time.
You know, we don't say Patrick's day.
Do you have a problem with that? I have no problem with that.
So do we need a motion for any of those for the?
Um, no, they're just tentative.
No, not for the dates, for the other one with the RFQs. For the, um, RFQs.
There's a resolution for me to place.
Right. So I need a roll, I need a roll call for the ZB 25-17.
So I'll make the motion.
Second. Now roll call.
Mr. Dagostino?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
Mr. Lebrada?
Yes.
Mr. Zicka?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Osborne?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So then I have a question. In our package, I thought we were going to be talking about, um, the fees and all that. Is that, is this for us to know?
Put that on December.
Okay.
Because John was.
Because John's not here, Fred's not here.
Fine. Okay.
Um, we can talk about that. We can talk about, we can review the YouTube.
Yeah.
Right.
Issue.
Right. Cause that's expiring on December 31st.
We can see what the viewing, viewing is.
Okay. Any board members have any comments, discussions, requests? No? Motion to adjourn? Motion?
Of what we just approved.
Oh, I do. Okay. I'm sorry. I thought we were going to, okay. I jumped the gun here.
Oh, we approved this resolution?
Yeah, okay. I, I, you approved, you approved the, the extension. So now we got to do the.
So now, yeah, now we're going to be the resolution.
So is there a number to that? How do we?
She is ZB 25-18, Grace, right? Is that?
Yeah.
All right. So, okay. So that's.
So this is the resolution, which is pretty, you know, straightforward extending it. The only thing I'm going to add here is because was her basis for the extension, which we're going to add, the extension is needed as they underestimated the challenge of obtaining a contractor and financing.
Okay.
The project. That's basically the only thing I would add to this. It's, you know, we're attaching the resolution from last year, which was provided. So it's, and we're extending it, what I had in there, which can change, is to October 18th of 2026.
Yes.
From the date it expires, not from today. So it's 11, it's 11 months for that.
But it's a one year from, from.
When it expires.
Right. So we're going to keep it on one year.
So we just need a motion to accept it as amended?
Yes.
So I'll make the motion to accept that as amended for the resolution.
Second.
Roll call, Grace, please.
Mr. Dagostino?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
Mr. Lebrada?
Yes.